Well, hopefully Marshall will join us. I think I'd get the meeting underway.
Hey, this is Zach here, gents on present.
Please, everybody turn off their audio unless it's their time to speak. Except for the board. Thank you.
Hello.
Hey, Marcia. Yes, hello, everybody. I would like to call to order the Woodstock zoning board of appeals meeting for May 26, 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Hi, we have, we have a quorum. Gordon Webb?
Jude Salado.
Marcia's willing.
Michael.
Michael Castiglione.
Okay. I would like to put forth the minutes for May 12, 2022 for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have two public hearings tonight. We're going to start with the ZBA case 22-13, application of Murray and Alan Gould for property located at 14 Tynkill Road, Woodstock, New York, 12498, a 3.11116 acre parcel located within R3 zoning district for variance from the zoning law of the town of Woodstock, Article 4, area bulk regulations, modification required yards, setback 260-26B2C for 25 infringement into a minimum required 50-foot rear yard setback in order to construct a two-car detached garage with accessory apartment. Do we have somebody who wishes to present this tonight?
Yes, I can present it. My name is Konstantin Kalisis.
Good evening, Konstantin.
Good evening. So I'm the architect for the Goulds. They won't be joining us tonight, but actually can walk you through the, through the project.
Great, thank you.
So the program was to design a two-car garage. There's currently no garage on the property with an art studio connected to it and a small accessory apartment with a small bedroom kitchenette for guesting at the property family. So the, it's quite a large site, but it's kind of limited in developing anything because where the existing house is, there's the septic system, which is on the, on the north side. And there's a pool and then it's, there's a large existing looping driveway. So when we started looking at areas to cite this new building, the only logical physical spot for it is the, you know, the north, northwest corner of the property. But in looking at the site plan, that corner, because it's an irregular shaped lot, forms a very sharp, kind of tight corner. So if, if, if we're designing within the current 50-foot rear yard setback, the building gets pushed much further west where a good portion of the existing driveway would need to be demolished and rebuilt. Trees would need to be knocked down and new drainage would have to be installed for the new driveway. And then also there is, there's a house that's, there's not many homes around visible from the property, but there is one on the south side, 13 Tynkill Road, and the owners are Matthew Cohen and Julie Cohen. And with the 50-foot rear yard setback, when the structure is pushed much further west, it's actually, the way the topography is set, the trees, they get, is a full view of the structure from their property if we would stick with the 50-foot yard setback. So in designing, we are requesting a 25-foot half the distance to the rear yard setback to cite the structure further into the corner of the property where it's much more private. It actually gets out of, there is no, now the view from 13 Tynkill Road is, you don't see really any of this structure at that, at that angle. And then with that, where it's cited with a 25-foot with a 25-foot rear yard setback, the existing driveway can remain and actually it's a very natural flow now to actually enter the property and parking the garage. So with those, it's with, with the view from the neighbor and also the, there won't be any demolition of the existing driveway. That's why we're requesting the 25-foot rear yard setback as opposed to the 50.
Okay, any questions from the board, Jude?
How large is the house?
How large is it? The accessory apartment and the art studio is 800 square feet.
Okay, I was asking about the house.
Oh, the existing house?
Yeah, just curious.
Oh, I don't have the exact square footage, but I think it's, it's close to 3,000 square feet potentially. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
Do you, do you know, do they reside there? If I were to go by, I should notify them if I just wanted to take a look. There's going to be somebody there, most likely.
They have, they have a residence also in, here in the city. But I'm sure they would, you know, if you want to go by and take a look, that would be fine.
Okay, thank you. And this is, this is not an apartment they tend to rent or short-term rent or anything like that?
I think it's mostly for family, but, but maybe there'll be a rental there at some point. I'm not exactly sure with that, but I think it's mostly for, for family or guesting at the property.
Anybody else from the board have any questions?
No.
Michelle, has there been any correspondence on this one?
There was. Yes, Michelle was going to read the questions from the neighbor.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, I'm back. Okay. Yes, one neighbor wanted to ask what Marcia just asked, if it was going to be used as an Airbnb. If yes, would the possible renters have use of the existing swimming pool?
No, definitely not.
Well, as it stands right now, it could not be used for an Airbnb. I hope that's clear to me.
From what I mean, it was designed mostly for them to use because you could see it basically, the art studio is connected to the space behind it. So it was the two-car garage and art studio that potentially, I know they have, kids are older, that would be, would stay there at the, at the accessory apartment.
Was there more, Michelle?
And trees must be removed to complete this project.
No. If, 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 if the variance isn't granted, yes. Because we would, there is trees, you could see in the, the loop of a driveway, there is trees inside that loop. So if it was, if we stayed within a 50-foot yard setback, the drive would be, would have to be altered and trees would have to come down. But at the 25-foot rear yard setback, no trees would have to be, would have to be touched.
And the septic system is adequate for what essentially is another bedroom?
We, we, we have a, we have a septic engineer that, you know, would have to be looked at afterwards. We didn't get that far because we wanted to make sure that we would be able to get the variance and higher structural engineer and the septic engineer. But it may have to be a, I'm not sure if another bedroom would, would put it over the gallons. But that's something would be looked at in the, right in the next phase.
Well, the property looks big enough to have a reserved field, most likely. So, you know. Was there anything more, Michelle, from that missive? Questions?
No, there's a second one, but it's not really a question, just says at this time, we have no objection to the variance request. On the other hand, if this apartment was to be built on a second floor over the garage, a variance may be necessary.
You broke up, Michelle. We couldn't hear you.
The second one doesn't say, it's not really a question, it just says that at this time, they have no objection to the variance request. On the other hand, if this apartment was to be built on a second floor over the garage, a variance request may not be necessary.
I think at that, at that point, the, if we had the second floor over the garage, I think the, the structure would actually would compete architecturally with the main house. Because right now it's actually at a, you know, the height of it is fairly modest, so it feels like an accessory building. But if we would add a second floor above the garage, then it's, you know, architecture, I don't think it works because it starts to feel taller than the main house.
Okay. I think, Michelle, this one was assigned to Martin, correct? As a
Well, I was going to do it with Martin, but I said that
Well, I know, we already, we already established that. Yeah, right. Now, so I was gonna, I was just sort of leading in text, I'm going to help Martin with it, so. So, yeah, so Martin and I will definitely be stopping by sometime next week and I guess we'll, we'll, we'll give a call, let them just know we're going by whether they're there or not, so.
Absolutely.
Sometime after the weekend, yeah.
Most towns are in the city, but I'm sure if you just give them a call, you could free to stop by and take a look at the property.
Thank you.
Do I need to read the contiguous neighbors? Are there any more questions from the board?
No.
I don't think there's any more questions. Hopefully you don't break up anymore. A little bit. You're freezing and going into robot talk.
Oh, no. I'm okay on my end.
Do you have your phone nearby too, maybe?
No.
No. Kids playing a lot of video games at the moment?
No, they're eating.
Oh, we keep you from dinner? Hi. Well, let's try, see if you can read the contiguous and we'll go from there.
Okay, Joseph and Avis Fuchin, which are the ones who sent the email. P.O. Box 1485 Woodstock, Peter Wortman, 28 Raybrook Drive, Woodstock, New York. Paula Chandler, 18 Lewis Hollow Road, Woodstock, New York. Jasme Chada and Ricka Bassin on 52 Raybrook Drive, Woodstock, New York. Matthew Cohen and Julie Cohen on 9 College Place in Brooklyn, New York.
Okay, is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak about this case? If not, well, then I guess I'd like to close the public hearing. That means that we, you know, will no longer be speaking about this in public. We can still take correspondence.
Right.
Any letters we can receive in regards to the case and, you know, we can speak directly with the owners in our site visit or if we have any questions after a site visit. However, there won't be any more public discussion on this if we close it here this evening, in which case then we would recess the case and we, after our site visit, we would confer with each other and go from there.
Great, thank you, Raymond.
We have 62 days usually to complete our decision. We try to do it sooner if, you know, everything falls in place. And that's kind of, that's the, that's the, that's the jib pretty much. So with that, I would like to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Favor? Aye. Okay, and with that, I would like to recess case number
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Konstantin. Appreciate it. I would like to, what is this dash, what? 14?
13.
13, okay, I would like to recess case 22-13. Do I have a second? On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you again. Okay, moving on. ZBA case number 22-14, application of Joseph Vecchio for property located at 25 Harder Road, Woodstock, New York, 12498, a 0.3 acre parcel located within R1.5 zoning district for variance from zoning law of the town of Woodstock, Article 4, area bulk regulations, modifications required yards, section 260-26B1B for 10-foot infringement into a minimum required 15-foot side yard setback in order to construct a 14-foot by 15-foot detached artist's studio. Mr. Vecchio? Would you like to?
Hi, hello.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. So would you like to describe your
Yes, so the intent of this project is to just have a workspace in the backyard. Both my wife and I work from home and the house is roughly 980 square feet. We just had a little daughter, she's 18 months, running around and it's taking up a lot of the house space. And we just need an area that we can do Zoom calls and work on, you know, our craft and a place that's separate from the house. So that's the intent. And that's pretty much it. It is a, will not affect or impact the neighbors in any way. It is in a clear area, so we won't be removing any trees. And it won't be a rental. There's no bathroom or anything like that, just heat and AC.
Any questions from the board? Jude?
Um. Are you, are you tearing down the house?
Absolutely not, nope.
I thought there was a demolition. You know, there were, there were plans that were sent to us about the house. Did you just rebuild the house?
No, didn't rebuild it. I did interior demolition work, so I took down a lot of like the sheet rock that was, you know, a little moldy and stuff like that. So just interior renovations, but the structure of the house is staying exactly the same.
Okay, and you're not enlarging the house then?
Nope.
Okay, so then my other question is, all right, so there's another existing building on here, this 420 square feet, is that a garage?
It's not 420 square feet, it's a little, it might, it might be a little less, but yes, you're correct. So that's the garage.
Okay, all right, we didn't say, it wasn't labeled what it was, I was guessing. And is, is this the only, is that within the setback too?
That's existing, that garage.
No, I understand, I'm just trying to
Yeah.
And then you feel like this is the only place that this can go, this building, that you?
It just gets a lot of the natural light because there's a lot of trees and I don't want to be removing so many trees. So it actually works really nice that the sun hits it in the morning and then the sun is still hitting it in the afternoon. So I don't want to have, you know, leaves all over it and ruin the integrity of it. And again, I want to kind of have the most daylight as possible.
So no bathroom, no kitchen?
Nope.
No, just a room?
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. I, I'm, I would like to come by and take a look. Marcia and I often go together. If you don't mind, I'll give you a call and let you know.
Absolutely. I staked it out as well, so it's right there on the side.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Seems pretty straightforward.
Yes. Okay, Michelle, can you, can you read the contiguous neighbor? List?
We did receive one letter from Alan Weber. Where he states that they are happy and supportive of the Vecchio's application to build the artist's studio on their property.
Okay.
Okay, that. And Ellen Cosero, 24 Harder Road, Woodstock, New York. Karen Bridener, 26 Harder Road, Woodstock, New York. Suzanne Kramer and Michael Hunt, 4 Holiday Drive, Woodstock, New York. Elizabeth Monahan, 65 Central Park West, Apartment 2D, New York, New York. Walter Bollumbach, 38 Yarri Hill Road, Woodstock, New York. Robin Collins, 23 Harder Road, Woodstock, New York. And Alan Weber, 22 Harder Road, Woodstock, New York.
Okay.
I have, I have. I, I, I just, sorry, go ahead. I just wanted to ask what the materials are that you're using to build this? What's it going to be constructed of?
So right now it's just going to be cedar shake siding. I'm going to do concrete for the subfloor. And yeah, two-by-six construction.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this case? No? Okay, well, so Jude and Marcia, you're doing site recon with this? Is that it?
Sure.
You said you're both doing.
Yeah, it's technically was assigned to me. Marcia and I like to go on these together, get
Yeah, yeah.
Two sets of eyes.
Yeah, that's fine. So with that, I would like to recess the public hearing and you heard my spiel before. Mr. Vecchio, yeah, so.
Absolutely.
Great. So with that, I'd like to recess the, I mean, close the public hearing. Okay.
Perfect, I appreciate the time. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. We appreciate it. Of course, Marcia and Jude will be in touch with you and we'll confer on it and, and move forward.
Perfect.
So with that, I would like to recess case number 2214.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Joseph.
Moving on.
Thank you very much.
We have a few decisions tonight. I would like to start with the ZBA case number 2204. I'd like to open that for purpose of discussion. Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
As you know, the, this is for the St. Gregory sign. Martin's not here this evening. But I spoke to him about it briefly. The, Jude is sitting in and is, I don't know if you're part of it, or sitting in the Zone Revision Committee.
I'm part of it.
And, and there's, there have been tests to work on this, the sign law or propose, you know, propose changes or alterations to the existing sign law. And with that, I really hesitate. I think I'm going to write something, I'll write something up together, buddy, for next meeting in regards to that. So I don't think we really need to do a lot more on that right now because I know we had some outstanding issues with it. But we really need to, it seems that we should not make decisions at this time. So in effect, it would be sort of a denial really at this time because, you know, we passed on it, the time has elapsed. We're not making a decision necessarily, but I'll write something to that effect.
How soon would the new sign code go into effect?
Oh, you know.
I know.
We're talking about laws here, you know, so not necessarily very quickly, but it might be prudent to defer to that at this point. You know, we've had a lot of issues with, with the signs that we've been dealing with, a lot of violations. I know the town's moving forward on them. But, you know, that's, it's a sign laws are a very hard thing to, to, to write and, and enforce from all sides. It's not an easy thing, but in light of the fact that it is going before the board, I don't think it's, you know, wise for Stephen to do anything. I mean, they're already, you know, even if we went with the Methodist church sign, it doesn't give them a lot of, it doesn't give them what they wanted. We'd have to increase another, we'd have to have another increase to bring the sign up to what they want. And we've already, you know, there was precedent for one with the the one in Bearsville, Methodist Church, they didn't even take advantage of the, the whole thing. So with that, I just think it's something we should, we should wait and, you know, if we have any notes on this, I'm sure maybe Jude will keep us in the loop when, when they move forward on that. And if, you know, we have any memos, it might be good for us to move forward because we've seen more about the signs than most people, so. All right, with that, I'd like to recess case number 2204. Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye. Can we recess it or are we going to close it?
No recess because we still have, I still have to write a decision.
Okay.
I still wanted to write something. So with that, it will not be closed. It'll be closed when we write something. So next meeting.
Okay.
And so I'd also like to open up case ZBA case 22-07, Brian Kelly Craig. I have a second.
Second.
Okay, we do have a resolution. Let me just pull that up here. I've had so many things on my desk, I'm a bit scattered. And they're, all the things are from the ZBA tip, so we've had so many things pop up. Okay, so a resolution based upon the standards for consideration of various variants set forth in section 260-103B of the zoning law of the town of Woodstock and area variance from the zoning law of the town of Woodstock, R5 district for a variance from the zoning law of the town of Woodstock. Modification required yard section 260-26B3B for 12-foot infringement to a minimum required 50-foot side yard setback in order to construct the 220-square-foot one-story and a 630-square-foot second-story addition to an existing single-family dwelling. Said variance is hereby denied, subject to all requirements of the zoning law of the town of Woodstock, New York State Real Property Law and all other applicable laws, codes and regulations. The vote is, Gordon Webb, aye? Mike Castiglione?
Michael.
Michael, are you there?
Well, Jude Salado? Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm here, I'm on safe driving mode. I abstain and I'll abstain from any votes tonight because I'm not familiar with the cases.
Okay, buddy, okay, we'll just get you to be there, we'll just get you to chime in, okay? Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, that's one extension. Jude Salado?
Aye.
Aye, Joseph Belik absent. Marcia's willing?
Aye.
Okay, it's three ayes, the vote. The vote is carried. Three in favor, one abstaining, one absent. Okay, so with that, I would like to close case number 2207. Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Gordon, Joe also said to text him if he needed, if we needed him to vote.
I, yeah. I don't think it's going to be an issue necessarily. Unless one of you abstains beyond Michael. Um. Okay, we have a resolution. I would like to open up case, ZBA case 22-08. Do I have a second?
Second. Aye.
Aye. A resolution based upon the standards for consideration of various supports in section 260-103B of the zoning law of the town of Woodstock and area variance from the zoning law of the town of Woodstock, Article 4, area bulk regulations, section 260-16, attachment 2, HRFG for a 5-foot infringement into a 10-foot side yard setback and a 19-foot infringement into a 25-foot rear yard setback. And section 260-94, non-conforming, you section 260-94A4B3 in order to construct a 320-square-foot addition and reestablish pre-existing off-street parking. Said variance is hereby denied, subject to all requirements of the zoning law of the town of Woodstock, New York State Real Property Law and other applicable laws, codes and regulations. Vote is as follows, Gordon Webb, aye? Mike Castiglione?
I abstain.
Abstain, Jude Salado?
Aye.
Joseph Belik absent. Marcia's willing?
Aye.
The vote carries three in favor, one abstaining and one absent. With that, I would like to close case, ZBA case number 2208. Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now that I would like to open up case number, ZBA case number 22-11 for the purpose of a brief discussion. Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
This is, I see Mrs. Gump is here, Mrs. Gump, this is not a public hearing, so we, we will not be able to take any comment on this, however. I just, I was looking at the property today. I would like to table voting on this tonight, especially without Joe here. I haven't had a chance to speak to Joe about this. So I would like to table this vote. It hasn't been brought up for votes. uh, table this vote. Uh, it hasn't been brought up for a vote. So I guess there's no actual need for a table. Uh, if there's any, unless anybody, um, opposes that, you can bring it up for a vote. So, uh, that's fine.
I'd like to say something. I think Jude and I both spoke with Joe. Joe was originally signed to be the site coordinator. And, um, he.
Yeah, I know you both spoke with him, but I just had some things. I spoke to both of you about it. I would just like, um, just to speak with Joe. It was, um, otherwise it would be, it's, it's, it wouldn't be enough people to vote on it because I won't vote on it tonight.
Okay, that's fine.
So there's, you'd only have two votes, so nothing could carry either way. So without, without me speaking to Joe, it's kind of, kind of moot at this point, okay?
We're, we're well within the timeframe.
Yes, so that's, uh, so with that, uh, I would like to, uh, recess ZBA case number twenty-two dash eleven, um, till next meeting.
Second.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. And we have one more. We have a resolution. I would like to open case, ZBA case number twenty-two dash twelve.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the resolution is as follows. Based upon the standards for consideration of area variance that, oh wait, before I read the resolution, um, I would like to have a brief discussion on this. Um, I didn't have time to add anything. I think that, um, one of the things that part of this thing that, that was, um, difficult for me in terms of this case is that there is a, a bathroom being added. There is plumbing being added to this guest cottage. Uh, beyond just what was being added to the house. And I just thought maybe that should be added into our, um, criteria. It was not in there.
Is this the Ohio Mountain case?
Yes. And I think it was pertinent to the fact that, you know, this, this case is adding two bathrooms with the one in there and the one in the house. And, uh, being an undersized lot, there's really no room for, uh, a reserve field, which is, um, so, um, but I can.
I still had to change a lot of the criteria that Joe sent me. I don't know if Joe had a chance to read the that I sent out. Cause I had to change a lot.
Um, perhaps, perhaps, um, to get, so we're gonna have to reopen it. I would like to add that I think it's important that that's added. Because, you know, density comes up sometimes. It's not a problem, but I'd like to clarify why what some of the problems are with this density issue. It's not just a bigger house and a little lot. Um, this is, you know, the two bathrooms, it's substantial. And it's not really noted in here. So I'd like to re, rewrite that, get that in there. And then bring it up at the next meeting. Maybe that would be the best way to go. Say, everybody, uh, has anybody said on that?
Good, or you could just make a statement now. And we can put it in.
I would like to vote on it. It's eighty-three percent coverage of the lot, even if there wasn't the bathrooms, I think.
Well, I get it. I get it. No, but there's a reason why I want to do that. Whenever we do something, it's good to have some of this significant and important re, and the important reasons of why we're denying it, you know? Yeah, because, you know, it's, it's, I just think it should go on record.
Well, can we just make a statement?
Could. Um, I, uh,
Can it be added after?
Or does it have to, or does the actual? I don't think so.
Well, I, I, it has to be, we have to, if we're voting or we have to vote, I'd have to reopen and we have to vote on the actual statement. Or I can sit here and dictate it now and we can, we could do that. I just really wanted to avoid doing that because I'm
I, I.
Exhausted. I, I did my own roof this week and I am beyond tired. So.
I support, I support, I second tabling it if that's what you feel like you need to do.
Yeah, I would just like to get this right. That's more important.
Let's do that.
Decision.
I, I mean, actually, I second it.
Thank you. So, uh, yeah, put up for table for tonight. We have a second. All favor?
We don't have to.
Well, well, Marcia wanted to bring it up for a vote, so I'm brought the table.
I, I feel like.
I just want you to know, in, in any procedure like this, a, a vote to table cannot be denied. So anybody can always do that at any time if they want to stop something from moving forward. You can vote to table something. I used, it was a, one of my, uh, arsenal when I was on the town board. You can always vote to table a resolution. And if you get support, then it's table. And that's it.
Had Joe been here, though, would we still have tabled it?
I, I want, yeah, I don't know if you understand. I want to get something down in writing in, in regards to this, this issue. And I want it down. I want it written in writing because we're quasi-legal board. I wonder, and I don't like to just, right now, I'm having a hard time finding words. And you know, I like to get the, the grammar correct and get everything right. So I would just prefer that. That, that would be really nice. So it doesn't change any feelings on this. I just think it's important that we get that information in it. So I think it's more, uh, we've had, we gave somebody just last week uh, um, a density grant. So, well, I'd like to clarify why this one is different than that one.
I hear you.
You know, it's important. You know, it's, it doesn't show we're giving any favor to anybody.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was ten percent. But I, I understand what you're saying and I think it's fine.
Right. That's, yeah, we're talking numbers here, but, uh, this is a pertinent thing. This should go on the record. That's, that's just.
I agree. I did, I did bring that up.
And it's not gonna change anything. They can't move forward and do it. So, you know, it's all affected. You know, it's what it is.
Right, gotcha.
And, you know, there's nobody more than me that likes, except maybe Michelle likes to get these things off the, off the table if I can. But I, I don't like to do it just willy-nilly. So the same with the other one that I, I asked for a little more time on. They just have a couple of things I, I want to, I want to go over.
Okay.
So.
Well, like I said, I spoke to you because there was a lot of stuff that wasn't right on it and I had to change it. So I was a little nervous about it as well.
All right. So, yeah, well, I'll go through that one a little bit. I was just, by the time I got to that today, I'd gone through so many, uh, I was a, a little bit frazzled. So I thought maybe I should just, we should just pass it any way on the density. But then I thought that this was too important to not include. To me, that was the, that was it. I didn't have to go any further. Once this information was made clear to me, what was, that there's no room for a reserved field. They're adding two bathrooms.
Was that conveyed to Joe, that information, or?
Yes.
You just found out?
No. Yeah, it was conveyed. He just didn't add it. So, um, but he didn't have the direct cor, you know, the, I guess, he, well, it's just not there. I'd like to see it.
That makes sense.
Yeah. That's important. I feel. Crossing Ts, dotting Is. So, um, with that, um, I, I'd like to give the floor to Michael for a few minutes if you, if you can, uh, uh, did we close that? Do we, do we, I guess, oh, recess the case. Let me recess this. Uh, like recess case twenty-two twelve.
Second.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Michael?
Uh, yeah, thank you. I, I wanted to have an opportunity to update the board on the, um, housing task force committee. Um, a housing task force committee was established after the building moratorium in the Hamlet Commercial District. And, uh, our goal was to take a look at the zoning law and see whether or not there were any changes that could be made to allow more people to live within, within the town. Um, and a lot of that was looking for affordable or what's maybe referred to as workforce housing. So, uh, this group, uh, there was a consultant who helped us along with it and they've made some uh, revisions to the zoning code. Um, they're putting together a presentation. It's gonna go to, what I'd like to do is just let everyone on the board know what the process is for the output of this committee. So, um, they're putting together a high-level presentation. It's going to the town board at, uh, their next meeting, I believe, next Tuesday. Um, and then they, the town board will receive the amendments to the code, section two six zero. Um, and, uh, I believe from there they'll have the opportunity to review the document. And I'm, I'm pretty sure they're gonna ask for what our, uh, input is on the requested changes along with the planning board, because those are the two boards that are primarily affected by it. Um, so when this does come to our desk for review, it will be, um, a fairly significant document to review and take a look at. Um, and we'll have a timeline to take a look at it, you know, exactly where it's gonna go from the town board for public discussion and then an amendment to it. So, um, it's gonna be coming to us. I just want to let the, the, the team, the, the board know that, that it, there is a plan for it to come to the ZBA. There is a plan for the ZBA to, uh, to get input from the ZBA regarding the changes to the plan. Um, you know, we may be looking at it from two different ways. One of the ways is, um, do we see issues with the wording and the language? Um, for example, uh, they were talking about, uh, building units, uh, multiple family that could have a certain number of building units. You know, Mike, my, our, our role might be to say, hey, you know, what is a building unit? We see that as something that could come up as a, a request for interpretation. Is a unit a bedroom or is a unit two bedrooms or is it, what is, what is a housing unit? So we'll need to take a look at it from that perspective. And that should be coming to us. Uh, I'm not really quite sure when the timeline of when we will receive the document. But it will be after the town board does it. So maybe over the next couple of months.
Michael, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
How can you assure that the housing, you say affordable housing for the workforce? How can you assure that the changes in the code for the accessory dwellings won't be used for short-term rentals or, you know, high rent, um, struck, you know, rentals?
Yeah, you know, we went through a lot of back and forth on, uh, how that is gonna work. Um, I mean, uh, there's, uh, there, the, the thought process at this point is that the community has reached its cap on short-term rentals so that, you know, uh, it, you know, one, you know, one example might be to allow two accessory dwelling units on one property, you know, so the, the, you know, the question could be that the, or the, the recommendation could be that that could go forward if that accessory unit is, is not, uh, S T R. It's, it's gonna be a contentious item, you know, Marcia, because it is really, uh, it's a very difficult product. It's very difficult, uh, you know, so, you know, coming up with a solution for it is very difficult. And there's many communities that have tried many different options.
It just seems to me that people are really preferring short-term rentals and giving them the opportunity to have more dwellings and have more income.
I mean, that, that is one recommendation we could make is to say repeal the short-term rental law. Do not allow short-term rentals in the town of Woodstock. And that would open up a certain amount of, uh,
Right. Or maybe some kind of a tax benefit if the dwelling was used for full-time.
Yeah, well, we weren't able to go into too many things other than the zoning code. So we tried to look at, I mean, there, there is a theory that one of the reasons that, you know, we're running into a, you know, a housing situation is single-family housing, residential zoning.
Right.
You know, so is there a way, is there a way we could put three buildings on a ten-acre lot that was in an R five district? Maybe.
I mean, the thing is, uh, you know, what, what I'm seeing i- in my business, we have to relocate people, uh, temporarily. And, uh, what used to be four and five thousand dollars for a full house furnished is now twelve thousand dollars. You know, for a monthly rental. You know, because they're, they're usually based on Airbnb prices. So, um, and, uh, the insurance companies, so we try to get them to put them up and not really, some of them are, are understanding what the situation is, but a lot of them aren't. You know, a lot, so, but the thing is, how do we enforce this? Is that part of the, the equation here? Um, how, how this is done so that, you know, these things are, are affordable. I mean, we did the, uh, the project over behind Bradley Meadows, but that was all spearheaded by Robco. And there were, there were precise, um, applications for people to get in there. So it, what, there were controls on, on, on that.
Um, yeah, well, and, and there are controls and a lot of the, you know, there, there is another theory to create, uh, workforce housing that you just eliminate the bureaucracy associated with zoning and let people build. Um, you know, that, that, that is a possibility too. So they, they're, they're gonna come across with some different suggestions, some ideas that they believe will, uh, allow more housing in Woodstock. Honestly, a lot of the changes that they're proposing are conceptual in that they're, they're, they're assuming that a builder will want to build something of that nature in the future. And, you know, that's gonna take a little time.
Okay.
I, I watched the town board meeting where Kirk and Deborah did a presentation about the presentation they're gonna do.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. Kirk and Deborah, yeah.
They said it was like three hundred pages.
Well, I mean, the whole, the, the whole code, second, two sixty is three hundred pages.
Well, they, that's what, that's what they, I think they've rewritten, um, majority of the code, is my understanding.
There, there are large chunks of the code that are rewritten. Yes, yes. And what they are is primarily related to housing, not necessarily area and bulk regulations. But, yeah, there are significant changes to it all. So when this, you know, I think when this document comes out to us for the review, uh, I think Gordon, we may want to take a look at it and see if we want to break up parts or if we want to have a secondary meeting or how we should go about creating output for what we've been provided.
Right. Okay, well, when we see it, we'll probably know.
Well, I just wanted to let everyone know so they weren't surprised about, oh, what's this going on about the zoning law?
Right. No, I appreciate it. Appreciate it, Michael.
Now, now we know and we'll, we'll get the document. We'll have the opportunity to review and provide input.
Okay, great.
All right. Thanks. Yep.
So, um, well, I guess with that, is there any other matters before the board this time?
Like Gordon, I just wanted to let everybody know. I just wanted to let everybody know that at the next town board meeting, they will also be talking about this, how we're gonna move forward with Zoom. Um, that meeting is on June seventh and I strongly recommend that if anybody does want to come to please, please come listen and give your opinion.
Right. I've been communicating with Bill about this a little bit. It's gonna be a public hearing. Um, and the town board has the authority to create a law resolution. I'm not sure which way that's going to allow us to continue on Zoom. It's kind of complicated. It doesn't make a lot of sense, but it's what the state legislature has. The town board um, can do this if they pass, they're gonna have this public hearing and then they can decide to pass or not pass.
Go ahead.
Now, as I say, what it essentially will mean is that you can be exempt for certain reasons, which, you know, are pretty broad. Um, but there, but in order to have a quorum, you have, the quorum has to be present. Three people from our board would have to be physically present. So in order to, so, for example, I can attend a meeting, um, but I can't be counted towards a quorum. However, I can still vote. So don't, that makes no sense to me. Um, but, uh, that's where it is. And I was gonna talk to you, Gordon, about some other, um, ideas I had about uh, those of us who are a little bit more reticent to be in the public. Um, and maybe there's ways we can work things that, that, you know, could make it work a little better. We can talk about that.
So is this a special meeting the town board is having on the seventh?
Uh, no, I think it's just a public hearing that they're holding during the meeting, right, Michelle?
During the regular town board meeting.
Their meeting is the thirty-first, I thought.
It's usually the second, isn't the second?
It's the regular, yeah.
No, it's Michael mentioned the meeting, that they were having a meeting next week. I'm like, I don't know if it's next.
Well, I was at the last meeting when Deb was there saying we are gonna present this to the board on the thirty-first.
Oh, so maybe that's, that's the special. Oh, so maybe that's, that's the special meeting, then, maybe.
I think that's the special meeting, and the seventh is their actual meeting. Because they meet the, yeah, I think they meet the second and the fourth of every month, just like us.
Something like that.
Yes, they, actually, they do. They meet the second and the fourth Tuesday of every month.
Okay.
The seventh is, the seventh is the first Tuesday.
Or second and third, I'm sorry, second and third, whatever.
They, they, they put it in their last meeting agenda to schedule a public hearing for the seventh.
Okay.
Yes, so the seventh is definitely the day they're gonna talk about Zoom, and Bill just want me to put it out there, if you guys want to come, to please come to the meeting.
Okay, thanks. All right. Without any objection, I would like to uh,
Adjourn.
Adjourn.
Good night, everybody. Have a good night.
Okay, good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Good night, good night, Michael. Good night, everybody.
Bye, Michelle, thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.